Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. And at this time, if you would, please stand for the invocation which will be given by Elder Michael Porter from Twine Memorial Holy Temple, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, it's good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Eternal Lord, our Father, we thank you for your loving kindness, for allowing grace, dear Lord, to escort us to this evening. We ask, dear Lord, that in the midst of this meeting, Lord, that you will guide Council, be strategic, and bless them, dear Lord, with governing decisions. We ask, dear Lord, that you look on the citizens of the city of Portsmouth, that we all know we are blessed because of the mighty God that we serve. As you look over us, dear God, we pray thy protection and thy guidance. We pray for those forces that are in place, dear Lord, with our police force and our fire department and others, dear Lord, of occupation. God, we thank you for your loving kindness. In the midst of this meeting, dear Lord, we invite your presence here, that you will guide over this meeting. Lead us and guide us, dear Lord, that we may be blessed. Help us, dear Lord, to do that which is right and pleasing unto thee. We pray, dear Lord, that you will bless Council from the Council's house to the White House and this great nation that we are part of. We ask your covering. Father, we thank you, we love you, we honor you. shall ever give your name the praise, and we thank you because you are the awesome God that we serve. These and all other blessings we ask, in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
At this time, members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay, thank you. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of September the 9th, 2013, of a call meeting September 10th, 2013, and a regular meeting of September the 10th, 2013, and finally, a call meeting of September the 16th, 2013. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. Unfinished business, consent agenda. 13-377 use permits. Item A, resolution granting the request of Alice Amory of Amory Seafood, too, for a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment with live entertainment at 6031 High Street. UP 1310, first reading vote, seven oh, approved. Vision principles, a robust economy for working men and women. Item B, resolution granting the request of Dana Harris for a use permit for a family childcare home at 4,005 Eptid Lane for 12 children aged six weeks to 12 years old of age. UP 1311, first reading vote, seven zero, approved. Vision principles, lifelong learning community in neighborhood and sense of community. C, resolution granting the request of Affilia Godwin for a use permit for a family childcare home at 5927 Eagle Point for 12 children aged six weeks to 12 years of age. UP 13-12, first reading vote, seven zero, approved. Vision principles, lifelong learning community in neighborhood and sense of community. Final adoption by electronic roll call.
Move for approval.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted, seven zero. City Managers Report, 13-399, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $73,140 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Department of Social Services to assist in securing employment for clients with multiple employment barriers. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, now have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 13-400, adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 11-5E and Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, and to repeal Section 11-6D of said code to establish a new fee structure for the City of Portsmouth Erosion and Sediment Control Program. Vision principles, a robust economy for working men and women, and efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, now have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 13-401, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant, excuse me, accepting grant funding in the amount of $81,116 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund to be employed by the Portsmouth Police Department, funds for technology initiatives, equipment, and continued funding support for the drug court program. Vision principles, change in new directions, quality of life, and efficient and responsive government. Electronic roll call, now have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 13-402, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant, excuse me, accepting grant funding in the amount of $5,218 from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration of the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund to be used by the Portsmouth Police Department to increase the use of vehicle occupants restraints. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and pride of past. Electronic roll call, now have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 13-403, adoption of an ordinance accepting grant funding in the amount of $45,948 from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration of the U.S. Department of Transportation and appropriating said amount in the FY 2013-14 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department to reduce driving under the influence of alcohol. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and pride of past. Electronic roll call, now have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 13-404, adoption of a resolution supporting the city's application to the Transportation Alternatives Program for the rail-to-trail conversion of the former Commonwealth Railway tracks in the city, excuse me, in the city. Vision principles, change in new directions, lifelong learning community, neighborhoods, and a sense of community, quality of life, and efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, now have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 13-405, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a deed of conveyance to the Virginia Port Authority for lot 216 in Penner's Point. Vision principle, lead, leading maritime center. Electronic roll call, now have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. New business, 13-406, boards and commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, the Personnel Committee recommends the following reappointments and appointments to our boards and commissions. Reappointments, Historic Preservation Commission, Rebecca Laries; Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Sandra Boone, Robert Scholes, and Bryant Thomas; and John Lifesey to the Historic Preservation Appointments, Library Board, Kentrell Devon; Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Cecilia Kelly; Parks and Recreation Committee, Betty Ashberry; Social Services Advisory Commission, DeAndre Barnes.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 13-407, items submitted by council members.
Let me first of all say what a wonderful joy, and I know I often speak about our partnership with our military partners, especially here in Portsmouth with the United States Navy as well as the Coast Guard. Well, this weekend, or last weekend, we actually had the Coast Guard Cutter Eagle to dock at High Street Landing. We were very excited about that. Admiral Parker gave me a heads up about two months ago, but couldn't confirm it until maybe about three weeks prior to. And we really appreciate the Coast Guard and their partnership in bringing the Eagle here. We had over 5,000 visitors over that three-day weekend, and it was quite an experience. And also last Friday, sailors aboard the United States vessel Abraham Lincoln, an aircraft carrier that has been overhauled over at Newport News Ship, they actually spent an entire day doing community service throughout Hampton Roads. And I forget the number of sailors that were dispersed throughout the region, but we had about 150 of those sailors from the Combat Systems Department that come to our city. And they were in about five different locations, and I met them at about three of the five. They were at the Portsmouth City Park, they were power washing parts of the building that had mildew and some other things on it. They were actually doing shrubbery, cleaning all up along the shoreline. They may have had about 50 or 60 sailors out there and spent a good part of the day. Out by the boat ramps, they were cutting trees. And I think, I think that was all I witnessed at the city park. And then over at the neighborhood facility on Elm Avenue, they had about 15 sailors there that did some painting and cleaning, as well as over at the senior station on Clifford Street. And I went over there, and we're actually in the process of remodeling that whole facility, putting in new carpets. And the sailors actually painted the kitchen area, the bathrooms, and some of the office rooms, and there was about 15 or 20 of them there. So, all in all, there was about 150 sailors onboard the Abraham Lincoln that came here Friday and done a very good deed. And it was a joy to talk to those young people, and most of them naturally from out of the state, west coast. There was quite a few from Wisconsin and California and Texas. For some reason, those, those three states had quite a few of them there. But just to talk to them about what they think of Hampton Roads and how they like living here and, and the things they do during their free times while the carrier's been overhauled is, is pretty interesting. And, and the feedback that you get from them is, is pretty straightforward, and, and most of them like enjoying their free time and all. So, we want to thank them for their efforts and the commanders and all that actually put it together. I think it was one master chief that came up with the idea, and the commander signed off on it, and, and away they went. The other thing I want to talk about is the 2013 Fishbowl Classic that we just had this weekend. It's their 66th annual, and once again, we had a number, a huge amount of people came out for the parade. They put on a show every year with dignity and raise money for charities that help kids primarily throughout this country. And I just want to thank them for their efforts and appreciate all of our citizens joining in in that effort. With that, are there any other reports? Okay, Madam Clerk?
13-408, report on pending items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on September 10th, 2013. There were six non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on September 10th, 2013. Three of the speakers required action by staff. Coralie Fagan had two concerns. The first concern was there were no recycle bins at the apartment building where she resides. Because this apartment building has a private company to take care of their refuse, the city would not provide recycle cans. Ms. Fagan was advised to take her recyclables to the recycling convenience site at the operations center located at 2005 Frederick Boulevard between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Please note, this option is available to all City of Portsmouth residents. Ms. Fagan's second concern was when riding her bike recently in the City of Portsmouth, an HRT bus driver rode very close to her, as well as blew the horn. The Portsmouth Police Traffic Unit Sergeant contacted HRT to advise them of this incident. The sergeant suggested several routes she could ride to avoid certain locations that caused her problems. Sally Wright and Betty Copeland expressed concerns about Willett Hall and the surrounding areas. In a collaborative effort, Parks and Rec, General Services, Public Works, the Sheriff's Work Crew, and Dominion Power addressed their concerns before the event scheduled for September 13th, 2013. And I want to take this time to remind everybody about Coffee Talk on Thursday, September 26th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. at Station 3, which is located at 4,001 Riverside Road.
Okay, very good. And this is our second edition of the Coffee Talk. And John, if you want to give us a brief update on the first one, I understand we had quite a few of our citizens came over and had engaged in conversation?
Yes, sir. In fact, first, I will ask Bernadette to come back up, so I can recognize the good work that she did to set this up.
Absolutely.
And we had a good turnout. It was like having coffee and pastries with your neighbors over the kitchen table. And the good thing, I was hoping this would happen, was that there was discussions across the table, not involving me. So, neighbor talking to neighbor.
Very good.
Do you want to add anything, Bernadette?
No, we did have a really good time, and we had a good turnout. And he's right, it was like sitting at your kitchen table. Citizens were really involved. So, we're hoping for that this Thursday.
All right, glad to hear it. And this one's going to be at which station?
Station 3, which is Riverside Road.
On Riverside Road, Station 3. All right, keep up the good work. Thank you.
And we have, just like on the first one, we have sent personal letters to each of the civic leagues, inviting them, inviting them not only to have one cup of coffee, but a second cup of coffee, too, will stay there as long as the coffee holes out.
Very good. Let me, and you reminded me with the speaker last meeting that talked about recycling and the concerns. Just want to let everyone know, we're, we're just completing the fifth week of our recycling program, and we're still doing well. We're averaging about 125 tons a week of recycled material, and our participation rate is holding at about 48%. And again, we've got about 2.5 million invested, and at about a 20% rate, we'll break even in five years. So, if we stay at the 48, 50%, we should see those returns a lot sooner. So, everyone, continue to keep up the good work. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 13-409, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Betty Ashberry.
My name is Betty Ashberry. I live in the Westmoreland Townhouses in the Churchland section of Portsmouth. Good evening to all you fine people up there.
Good evening.
I don't have any complaints tonight. What I'm here for is because of some of the things that I have witnessed at some of the city, past city council meetings recently, have kind of upset me. So, I felt compelled to come and tell you all tonight something that I witnessed on Sunday. It was wonderful. My townhouse is, there's an alley behind my townhouse before the next group behind me, and several of the fathers have set up basketball courts in the back for the kids to play basketball. And they do play back there frequently because there's not as much traffic back there. So, I was sitting on my sun porch, and I heard some laughter and some talking, and thought, gee, that sounds funny. And then I'd hear a ball bounce. So, I couldn't see what was going on in it back, so nosy me, I went upstairs and looked out the upstairs window. There were two little boys out there, not playing basketball, but tossing a football around, and they were having a wonderful time. And of course, as you know, once a ball's being tossed around, it's not going to remain two for very long. Three more came up. And I watched those five figure out how they were going to work together with one football, so that everybody got an opportunity to carry the football, to run with the football. So, I could just, I was just close enough that I could hear part of the discussion. I never heard anybody say, well, this is my football, so we're going to play the game my way. I didn't hear anybody say, okay, we're going to do it this way, and if you don't play this way, we're going home. They stood there, and they worked out, and they played probably for a good 45 minutes to an hour. And I watched them, and yeah, each one of them got their hands on the football. Each one of them had a chance to run. So, I looked at them, and I studied each one of those five little boys. Each one of those little boys had two eyes. Each one of those little boys had two ears. They all had a nose. They all had a mouth. They all had two arms, and they all had two legs. Five fingers, I mean, 10 fingers and 10 toes. There was only one difference in those five little boys, and that was the color of their skin. And you had more cooperation. And you know, I thought to myself, and Bishop, you probably can remember the quote much better than I can, but somewhere in the Bible it says, "And the little children shall lead." And I kept thinking, you know what? Sometimes the little children should be the teachers, and we should be the students. Because, and I know it's been recommended that we go back and try to petition for our city to become an all-American city again, but I really feel like we've got a little work to do before we can be considered an all-American city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, city manager, city attorney. Of course, I'm Tony Goodwin. I reside in Parkview in the city of Portsmouth. And I come to here this evening as the representation of the Portsmouth Council of Civic Organization. As some of you may know, this group is comprised of civic league presidents or appointees, property owners throughout the city. Our meeting, of course, on September the 18th of 2013, we had a representation of about, just about a dozen of our league presidents and their representatives to have a discussion over, of course, the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And as you've maybe already received, a copy of the letter that was formally written at the request of, of the body that evening. But I'll go ahead and read it for our, our viewers and also the audience here tonight. But on September the 18th, 2013, the meeting of the PCCO had an open discussion over the latest developments of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and recommendations. And these issues were brought to the leadership of the PCCO by an active member of our organization to have that discussion. The majority of the members in attendance that evening felt that the present services and facilities were lacking, and as a result, the majority of the voting membership that evening voted in favor of supporting the recommendations of that plan. The information that was discussed during the meeting was mainly in reference to the summary outlined on page eight of the plan highlighting the five broad-based recommendations, which are as follows. And these items would, of course, include the communication to the citizens, maintenance of facilities, recreation and expansion, community facilities updates, which is, is, I believe, very much in order, and finally, additional land for expansion of parks. Other items were discussed and suggested that would relate to finance feasibility of new facilities, and most importantly, community activism on creating programs and parks through civic engagement and fundraising. So, we obviously didn't put it all on the burdens of just city council or, or the city staff. We felt like we, as citizens, could very well help in the process. We invite you to be part of our discussions or ongoing discussions and feel that the collaborative efforts of the PCCO can be, of course, a valuable tool for all. So, I, again, I just represent this group as, and this is the group that came together and put this, and it was a body that agreed to this, the letter for the evening. So, again, to give you moral and, and support in your decision process from last meeting. I'd also like to transition a little bit to more of an emergency meeting that was happening this morning in reference to questions of how the tunnel, full weekend tunnel closures are impacting our city, citizens, and businesses. This is obviously a concern of ours at the Old Town Business Association and business owners and citizens, again, throughout the city. So, with that in mind, some of your speakers this evening will be discussing with you the continued support in how we can leverage powers to be to actually alleviate from having a full weekend tunnel closure to something of along the lines of bidirectional traffic in the other tunnel, which has been a discussion for over a year by the, by the leadership of the Old Town Business Association. And it was heard, basically, it was fell on deaf ears. So, we would ask, ask for your support to help leverage that position and to, to bring back some of the business that is being lost weekend after weekend in, in many of our businesses, not only here in downtown, but also all points in Portsmouth. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and by all means, I'm here for questions.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Tonight can be a different night than most other city council nights. Tonight, we, the citizens of Portsmouth, and you, the representatives of us, must, at this point, take a very clear and strong stand and send the clearest and strongest of messages to the ERC and VDOT, again, these tyrants, these bullies, as they, as they are. The message that we are not going to take this anymore, this punishment that they've been dealing out to us since the beginning of the, the tunnel closures. Together, we have to decide to file another action, which we've done before, and I think that's probably why we're being punished. The closures have been, unfortunately, very injurious to the businesses in Portsmouth and, and businesses west of us. The filing of another action will only get their attention, and, but we need, we need action, we need them to take action to make this a better environment for business on this side. Between now and May, most of the weekends, I would say the predominant number of weekends will be closed. So, people traveling from the east coming to Portsmouth will be met with the same thing they've been met with for the last month and a half. The tunnel closings have dealt a severe blow to my business and to many other businesses, and we've talked about it pretty much for the last, ever since we started the closings, ever since the closing started. It's pretty doggone irresponsible for the ERC and VDOT to have taken this action without involving the businesses to, to see exactly what our concerns were, and they really didn't. They dictated to us, they told us what they were going to do. And we need to, to basically send them a message, and the message is that we are going to... And we need to basically send them a message, and the message is that we are going to not stand idly by while this is happening. We need to have VDOT and ERC make a very simple decision to turn the eastbound tunnel tube on weekends into bidirectional traffic, so two-way traffic can go through the tunnel. The way it's been has been just terribly ineffective. People have, people, our customers, our guests from outside Portsmouth have really taken, taken, I guess the only way we can describe it is not come-to-Portsmouth attitude because they're not sure however, or where they're going to, where they're going to get through to Portsmouth, if they're going to take the Jordan Bridge for a toll, or if they're going to go wait an hour to get through the midtown tunnel, or go to the high-rise bridge, like has been suggested, which is another forty-five minutes to Portsmouth. Portsmouth has been blocked off. You know, as much as we want to say all roads leads to Portsmouth, it's not an easy way to get to Portsmouth, and we must do something together, and we must do it soon. We can't let what is happening become a paradigm shift in the way people decide they're going to spend their weekends. And Portsmouth is the last on their list because of these tunnel closings. So when it comes to how we can work together, we need to do something on the order of sending a message to the ERC and VDOT by possibility, I guess for lack of a better way, we need to file an injunction against, against these people. Maybe a temporary restraining order will get their attention, and then they can decide that what they can do, in the simplest of measures, is to just open that eastbound tube, the two-way traffic. That will mean, that'll make a major influence on how our visitors to Portsmouth think about coming here. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer any of them for you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Charles. That suggestion is certainly, I think, one based in common sense and has been talked about town. I guess my question is, has there been an official request from the city via staff to ERC and VDOT? And if it has, what has their reaction been?
Mr. Rowe.
In fact, this is very timely, and we were strategizing this morning, first thing, picking up on our homework assignments from last night. The chances of getting any relief, economic relief, from the General Assembly is really slim. In fact, it's none. The real relief is to bring pressure, and it's got to come from more than just the municipal corporation against the, I would say, the Commonwealth Transportation Board. There are three members from this area, and that's, that's our strategy. We can write the letter, but citizens have got to write the letter, too. You need to ask your city attorney, what is the likelihood of prevailing on an injunction? It may be something that you do that doesn't have much chance. It's a very good idea. But bidirectional, two-way traffic is a solution if we have to bear the tunnel closure. And so to answer your question, we haven't officially asked the Commonwealth Transportation Board. We are going to ask, but it should be a full frontal attack done not only by the city, but by business associations, the chamber, and particularly individual citizens, because these are political appointees.
Mr. Moody.
Well, I guess the question, and perhaps our attorney can give us the answer tonight, but we do need the answer, I think, of the chances of an injunction. And even the chances, sometimes it's not the end result, it's the fact that they know we mean business, even regarding the item in our legislative package to offer assistance to the quantifiable business losses that have happened because of these closures. And I realize that we have to quantify that, but I would expect our General Assembly delegation to move forward with that and hopefully recruit some other General Assembly members from these other cities. These other cities have set on their butts, quite frankly, and pretty much done nothing. This whole fight has been led by citizens, and I'm sure they certainly support us in the bidirectional move as well. But by golly, I would expect our General Assembly members to talk to some of their colleagues throughout the region and see if we can't go as a region asking for economic assistance. I'm sure businesses in Norfolk and other places can be hurt as well.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes, sir. Councilman Moody's point is right on, and I would recommend that the citizens, and part of our strategy would be to contact our delegation, but, you know, as a municipal corporation, we don't vote, but citizens do, and I strongly recommend that you contact at least our senator, our two senators, and our two delegates. We have some very senior members of our delegation, and that's, that's a very good strategy. Ask them to put the pressure on these political appointees, and I'm talking about the Commonwealth Transportation Board members.
Right. May I, may I ask one more question? Yes, you can.
My, my concern is that going through the walk and the talk with the General Assembly is a slow process. We can't, we can't wait for a session to start. We're talking about another several months. The possibility of filing an injunction, getting maybe a temporary restraining order to get this, get this issue on the table in the media, letting that public opinion take its pressure that it needs to bear upon VDOT and ERC, I think it would be a very easy thing to convince these people that we mean business, because if we do this, if we send them this clearest and strongest of messages and the simplest of methods by filing an action in court, and I don't think you'll find too many judges that would be against helping, helping our community and helping what's right. You know, we're talking about what's right, not what's wrong, or, you know, the bottom line is, if we can get this, city council, our, our city attorney, possibly we can get through this and do it quickly. And then we give the opportunity to VDOT and to ERC to go ahead and make the simplest of changes. We have the apparatus, we have the roadway, we have the crossover right in the middle of the median between the Berkeley Bridge and the tunnel tubes. That tunnel can flow easily both ways. There's no issue about safety, there's no issue about any other smokescreen that they're trying to put up in front of us. We can do this. It can be done. The thing is, is that they say they can't, it's not true. They won't, because they're punishing Portsmouth. This is a punishment, and we are not going to take this anymore, and that's the message we should send them. And I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good night.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to switch topics for a minute, and then I'm going to segue neatly right back into that one. I wanted to talk about the Portsmouth Farmers Market for a couple of minutes, because we are still going strong. We are not seeing the numbers that we've seen, I'll address that, but we will run every Saturday through December twenty-first. Our fall/winter hours begin on October fifth, and that is when we start at 10:00 a.m. instead of 9:00 a.m. After two years of cold feet, literally cold feet, and hands and noses, we came to an agreement with the vendors to start an hour later so that the sun is out, and that's actually when people start coming out shopping, when it's warmed up. But this coming Saturday, which is the last Saturday in September, we still have our summer hours, and we are having a car show as part of the National Plug-In Day. So vehicles featuring the latest green technology will be parked at the market from nine until noon, and you can come, and they'll be doing show and tells. Some of the owners will be there and give you a tour of the cars. Then on October fifth, we'll be hosting presentations on preserving and storing foods. Virginia Tech is sending out extension agents to do some presentations for us, so that should be a good way to start our fall/winter market. Now, back to the tunnels. Because of the impact of the tunnels on the market, we have seen numbers down every weekend, except for the Labor Day weekend, when, of course, the tunnels were open. And that has been difficult for a lot of people to deal with, because we know that it's not just us being affected. We know that the numbers of people who are showing up on the street are reflecting other organizations, other facilities, other shops, and the restaurants, who are not seeing the numbers that they need either. And we do have some businesses here, I realize, that have a lot of internet business, and they can, they can cope. They have means of getting their customers satisfied through shipping things out to them. But restaurants, museums, our theaters, you know, the Commodore, numbers are down. All of those kinds of businesses really need feet on the street. They really need people to see that, that we're open for business still despite the problems with the traffic. And I agree with Charles Greenhood that we, we need to send a clear and very firm message. And as much as I would like to think that the legislators would help mitigate something through some kind of economic package, I was down there last year to speak about this at several committees, and I was not getting a real strong sense that they were going to be doing anything for us. The bills that were presented for mitigation, there were tax preference bills, there were bills that were geared to seniors and students, there were all kinds of permutations, and they tabled or just threw them out altogether. A couple were sent to the Tax Preference Newly Formed Committee, but I don't have a lot of hope about that particular thing. So I would agree, now that I have been blessed with the fun and games of being involved in a court case that's lasting almost two years, that there may be something to the idea of having a legal action. Even if it doesn't go very far, it's a firm and clear attempt to get people to the table. And I'm afraid I don't have a lot of faith in the CBT either. My experience with that has been watching what happened when James Rich, who was representing Charlottesville, the Charlottesville area, did, he voted against something that the governor wanted, the bypass at Charlottesville, and he got removed from the board. It's a rubber stamp board right now. So I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think it'll hurt to get in touch with him, but I don't have a lot of faith in that. So I would suggest that while we are getting more and more information from businesses so that there are hard facts to deal with a legal case, that there has to be some other way that we, we show that we need to make this stop now before further damage is done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we need to keep our legislative team engaged, because ultimately, they may be our last line of defense on tunnel tolls, as you know.
Right.
If the ruling doesn't go our way, or if it goes our way, I think it's going to end up back in the General Assembly. So we're going to need all hands on deck from our legislative team, and if we don't get the region behind this thing, our, our success rate is going to be pretty much nil, I believe, if we don't go there as a region. So I think it can be two-pronged. I think we take the legal route and we take the legislative route. Let them earn their money. Let them, let them keep in practice for the fight, I think ultimately, that they're going to have to do in Richmond. So I think it's two-pronged.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think every possible route should be taken. It's just that I don't think we should depend on one, one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. With apologies to the great American poet Walt Whitman, I sing the market electric. As Ms. Danaher said a little while into, a little while ago, this Saturday, Portsmouth will be the center of the Hampton Roads Observance of National Plug-In Day 2013. And I'm excited because there will be Chevy Volt's, at least one Leaf and possibly two Nissan Leaf, and at least one and possibly two Teslas. Now Teslas, for those of you who are not followers of developments in electric automobiles, Teslas are the highest-range electric passenger vehicle in the world, and they're made in the United States of America. This has, they're kind of high-end, they're beyond my price range at the moment, but the story of manufacturing is, the more of a product that's built, the lower the unit price becomes over time. So I hope that in my lifetime, if I still have my physical ability to drive, I will be able to acquire one. But it will be quite fascinating, I think, for anybody who comes out, whether or not they're in the market for an electric vehicle at the moment. The technology has great promise. Electricity, you know, does not come out of the Persian Gulf. It is a homegrown energy source. Vehicles that use electricity to power themselves are not contributing to ambient air pollution in the local area. Hampton Roads has been and will continue to be, for the foreseeable future, an ozone non-attainment area. And contributing to that, to a great extent, are tailpipe emissions from vehicles that burn fossil fuel. So on a number of levels, this is a very hopeful development in advanced technology. The National Plug-In Day presence will be in two places on Saturday. Starting at nine o'clock, the vehicles, and we hope to have a representative from Dominion Power to talk about the electric vehicle rate that they offer for charging electric vehicles, will be at the Farmers Market until noon. At 12:30, I'm sorry, at noon, we will shift, and we will set up at the National Night Out Observance for Cavalier Manor. So we're trying to carry the show from one end of the city to the other and let the word go out. We hope you'll be there.
Thank you.
We should be having Mayor Holly's weather.
Thanks, Mark.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, Ms. Whitehead Staff, good sign of the arm. Clyde Toler, Parkview. I come before you tonight, will you please pass out the thing that I set up there for you? I come to you tonight because there has been a very highly increase of wild animals in the neighborhood. Fox, coons, possum, and they're not afraid of it. And I think the animal control people, you need to hire some more people and put them on the street at night, set some traps. We need to take care of the animals. I sit on the porch, fox run right across my yard, not only fox, coons. Hey, this is ridiculous. Sooner or later, some kid going to get hurt by a bit or something, and then we going to have a problem. So I think we need to tighten up on our code. I pass this to you so that you can see there's a lot of things that need to be done. You can send the city inspector to my house, because most homes in the front is cut beautiful, but don't look in the back. Now, I will get to this. Tonight, we have Elder Pastor Porter here. He is the third pastor of Twine Memorial. There will be a of Twine Memorial. They will be 103 years old next month, and this is 2013. This is something great for the city. The one that did their vocation here for you. This is a great thing. And I want to say to you, Mr. Rowe, don't worry about it. The same God that takes care of me and you, brother and sister, he doesn't do evil thing for evil peoples. So you keep your head up and keep your trust in God. Mr. Terry, thank you for coming by to check on me, although I wasn't home. But anyway, I appreciate that. I've been to three civic league meetings throughout the city. And Mr. Meeks, thanks for letting us know about the $8 million. You owe the contractor $9, take the 80, give it to them, give them another million, pay off your debt. It's a good thing you put it in the paper, let us know what's happening. All right, I will go right back. I want to express something with you. I had to write this down because I don't want to say anything bad to you. If you care about me, don't just agree with me, and I am lying to you or myself or others, tell me about it. I have not spoke a lot of angry words to you or curse you or anyone on this council. If this council is concerned about citizens of Portsmouth, please have the decency and the guts to act responsible and level with the citizen to see the truth. Now, we have a reporter here that's been here for many times. You know Ida Kaye. When I was a reporter, we sat together. She did the news outstanding. Dave Forrest was another one, was a good one. But Hawkeye's gone, no love lost. Because they said it at the civic league meeting. He talked about us none during the speakers. Well, he finally printed some mail. You always tell him to print some. He finally printed some, didn't he? But ain't no love lost. But she's here tonight, sitting right back here. But anyway, I wish you would do something about these snakes today. I, Mr. Terry, that's not my snake, man. I know you're looking at me, but that's not mine. He's in the house. But anyway, we need to do something about this. And we need to get some of these shrubs. And the city need to be cleaned. Of course, right now, at one civic league I was at, they were saying that they glad to see some of you council members stepping up to the plate. You're not bench warming, sitting in the seat no more. So have a nice night.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. I'm Clerk.
Erin Carter. Ms. Donna Sya.
Good evening. My name is Donna Sya. I live at 3104 Garland Drive, Principal of Liberty 21. Strong local self-government is the key stone to preserving human freedom. Do we ever wonder what the founding fathers would say if asked whether our present republic is in a position of power or in a steady decline? They may say to us, you have not followed our warning to refresh yourselves at the wellspring of your origins, and because you haven't, you will perish. You have not maintained your freedom as a high priority by frequent repetitions of the fundamental principles of the Constitution, or continued your devotion to those principles of piety, justice, moderation, temperance, industry, and frugality. These principles are absolutely necessary to preserve the advantages of liberty that maintain a free government. You have elected some of the most undesirable persons to our office. You have removed providence from your councils, schools, courts, and assemblies. From the day of the Declaration of Independence, you are bound by the laws of God and by the laws of the gospel, which acknowledges the rules of your conduct. You have a choice: providence or chaos, conviction or compromise, discipline or disintegration. Peter Marshall stated he was tired of hearing people talk about their rights and privileges as American citizens. The time has come when people ought to be talking about their duties and responsibilities as citizens. Americans' future depends upon her accepting and demonstrating God's government. Government is defined in the dictionary as a system of ruling or controlling. And therefore, the founding fathers measured political systems in terms of the amount of coercive power or systematic control which a particular system of government exercises over its people. In other words, the yardstick is not political parties, but political power. What they wanted to establish was a system of people's law, where the government is kept under the control of the people and political power is maintained at the balance center with enough government to maintain security, justice, and good order, but not enough government to abuse the people. Today, we have become a nation based on a society of rule by man. The Constitution once held in high esteem is now often ignored, changed to meet the opinion of a judge, or considered outdated, whereas our founding fathers revered it and considered it a document written for the ages. In spite of the blessings accrued to the average American, many hate this nation's form of government and are dedicated to destroying it, while others are indifferent, apathetic, and could care less about its rapidly deteriorating condition. The way many people are considering the Constitution, one can see how it is transferred to their neighborhood. Their neighborhoods are declining because the people want the government to take care of them. Socialism does not work because it takes away a person's incentive to work. Passions are stirring up a division in the city over a recreation center in Truxton. Truxton is located in Voting Precinct 13 and Police Service Area 3. In Police Service Area 3, there are six voting precincts: 13, 20, 21, 26, 27, and 28. Truxton has a rich history that stems from World War I needs associated with the shipyard. Through community involvement, Truxton residents established a strong precedent of community commitment, which has served the neighborhood well through the years. Until the late '50s, the ward system of local political representation spawned a very active community organization, the Harrison Ward League, which encompassed Old Truxton and served as a forum for voice and community needs. With the end of the ward system, however, the strength of this organization failed, and Old Truxton residents began participating in two different community leagues that represented the new practices which divided by Portsmouth Boulevard. The division has not only undermined neighborhood cohesiveness, its community has suffered from the lack of common organization through which to further its goals, and now the neighborhood is affecting the city as a whole. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Joseph Griffin. Ms. Regina Black.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Regina Black, and I reside at 512 Yorktown Avenue. I am here on behalf of the Uptown Neighborhood Concerned Citizens, and we are not opposed to the methadone clinic behavior complex, but we are opposed to the location and some of the business owners are Hairstyling and Profiling, Urban Frank with the Portsmouth Army-Navy Store, Classic Cuts Barber Shop, The Barbers Davis, and Braids &amp; Beyond. And we're not opposed to it, we're just opposed to the location. In 1998, the city assessor records report that IC Norcom High School was built at the present location. In 2001, U.N. 992013 Council briefing reports on page 26 that that site was proposed site for the new BHS building. Ever since that, 2001. And, but the school is there. And 2002, that property consists of eight parcels. And in 2002, the city of Portsmouth purchased seven of them, according to the city assessor's records. And in 2006, the city of Portsmouth purchased the other parcel, according to the city assessor's records. But the school is still there. And our children catch the bus at the corner of King and Yorktown. Our children are there. Parkview Elementary School kids, they begin at the bus stop at 8:10 a.m. The children arrive there. The bus picks them up between 8:20 and 8:40 a.m. When I had my meeting at the Behavior Health, they told me that the methadone clinic is open from 6:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., Monday through Friday, and from 6:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m., Saturday and Sunday, which their reports, they have approximately 100 people who are addicted to opiates that will be coming in when the children are there at that bus stop. And we received a notice on June the 4th. Before that, that there would be a planning meeting on, at the Planning Commission meeting. And it has been said that no one said anything. At that meeting, we spoke up, me and the neighbor next door. The meeting says that our records show that you own property in immediate vicinity of the subject property described above. You are encouraged to attend the above referenced public hearing to state your views on this application. That we did. And it said TSR-1302 Uptown. The city of Portsmouth by Michael Weiner of HBA agent requests a Type II Site Plan Review. Well, at that meeting, it was supposed to have been a request for a site plan review. But when we get up and we spoke about what our issues were with the safety of the children there, and the school is there, they said to us, Mr. the Planning Department, Mr. Russo and I, even the developers spoke and said it was already a done deal. Well, how can that be so if this was just a meeting to, for him to request a plan review? I'm done.
Thank you.
Ms. Frances Jones.
Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor, Council Meeting, Members. I am overwhelmed. I've got joy above and beyond. Why do I have joy? The last time I was here, I brought my chain to let you know how I live, because of the element that's in the neighborhood. And I still have that joy inside. You know why I have that joy inside? Is because I had the opportunity that I woke up on Saturday morning in my right mind, and I happened to see the meeting that you guys held on September 9th, 2013, at the roundtable. I was shocked out of my mind, and I thank God for awakening me. What I saw and what I heard, I was shocked. I couldn't believe my ears of the things that I heard and the things that I saw, and I witnessed on TV. I saw the building at 505 Washington Street. How is it supposed to have plasters? And everything was falling off the wall, and the red door and all of that. I had an opportunity to go in that building yesterday. And you know one thing? There's also a violation there. Because as I walked through the door and passed the elevator, I went to the right. And if you go to the right, there's a red door that says Women's Bathroom, red as ever can be. Then I turned to the far right. There's an exit door there with a padlock on it and a two-by-four. If there any thing should happen in the building downstairs, or someone trying to exit out the back door in case there's an emergency that happened to the front double doors, they could not get out. Where's our code member? Where's, you tell me about the violation? Now, remember now, you guys showed us on TV on September 9th meeting, the September 9th meeting, to show the things. Then you happened to mention, I got caught the corner of my hedges. That, oh, there's a house that's condemned. Do you know who that was? That's a bowled-up porch that the owner had not painted. If you go by now, it's painted. It's not vacant unless the people just happened to just gun up and fly away, you know? It's just, it's just, it's just not true. What else that was not true there? Guess what? Mrs. Black and her mother was at the meeting, but I heard someone says nobody showed up. I thought that was very interesting, what I was seeing and what I was hearing, hearing from the people that sat up there. Everyone accepted, Mayor. I know who voted for it, and I know who didn't vote for it. And I was shocked out of my wits. But I had that joy. You know why? Because God allowed me to wake up to see it for myself. I thought that was awesome. So, Members, you can vote for your building in front of my house. Like I said the first time I was up here, we'll see. You know why? I liked the lady who first gave her a speech, about the five little boys that was playing ball. I thought that was an awesome analogy. She was telling us something. She was telling us how to get along and respect. I thought that was awesome. I also heard about the school that was on, that's on County, and London, that was a Court Street Academy. Things I heard, I was shocked out of my wits, happened to be coming from you guys, some of you guys. I was shocked. Remember now, it's all on TV, so I'm not lying. Check your meeting on September 9th. I thank God for giving me the open eyes to know what I'm dealing with. So when I turn my plate down and pray, I would know how to govern and who to call, ask the Lord to, how he needs to help us. Because it seemed like everything we said so far has been thought on deaf ear, deaf ear. But I always, always say, the building's not there yet, and God is still in control. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Athena Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable members. My name's Athena Jones, and I live on 600 Darktown Avenue. I am, come from a long line of passionate women that, you know, are activists and believe that when something is wrong, you do what you can, and you voice until you can't voice anymore, and then God takes over, till something happens, till something is done. Where we live, the issue currently is prostitution. The issue currently is drugs. The issue currently is drug distribution. The issue currently is the transportation of individuals coming from outside neighborhoods into our neighborhoods. The issue again is the fact that we have several city and state facilities in our area that also adds to the issue of the individuals that are living in that neighborhood. And so people are forced to live behind gates, locked doors. People are forced to not allow their children to play outside. People are forced to stay inside because they're scared, because they fear the elements that are there. Now, I was there. I listened to the meeting September 9th on television. Thank God for technology. I listened to it and I heard it. And some of you said it was a moot point. Well, how can it be a moot point if the issues are not resolved? How can it be a moot point if the high school that is there, several weeks ago, someone had indicated that IC Norcom High School has a rate of, I believe, 76% in graduation, which means roughly that one out of every four children will not graduate. That school is in my neighborhood, the neighborhood with the prostitution issues, the neighborhood with the drug issues, the neighborhood with all of these other issues. And so as servants to the people in this community, you should know what the issues are. And I believe you are aware of the issues. Unfortunately, it seems as if the issues are not your concern. The issues, let's add to the issues. Okay, well, how are we going to add to the issues? We're going to put good people in your neighborhood. We're going to put homes in your neighborhood, no. We're going to put a field and a soccer program in your neighborhood, no. We're going to put things that uphold and increase the property value of your neighborhood, no. We're not going to do that. We're going to take a clinic, a methadone clinic, with people who are in the judicial system, people who do have parole officers, people who may be repeat offenders, who, people who may be more than first-time violators, and add to the issues of my neighborhood. Now, as servants of the community, you sit and listen to the pleas of the people. And on September 9th, it was a moot point. On September 9th, all of the issues- On September ninth, all of the issues were resolved. Well, the reality is, how can the issues be resolved if prostitution is still an issue? So let's add police force to our neighborhood. Well, if we add a police force, let's live under a police state then. We go out and the cops are there all the time. Projects, that's how it happens in pro, in the projects. I lived in Miami. Police were there all the time. How does that benefit the neighborhood? How does that upkeep the neighborhood? We can't even get the street sweepers to come through our neighborhood as much as they do in Old Town and Downtown to sweep our streets, and you want to add other issues to our neighborhood? I believe that is a deep concern, because if you are a person and people who are elected to be servants of the community, to hear the voices of the community, to see the strains and the stresses of the education system, but yet you add something, another issue, another stress to the community, so good sir, this is not a moot point. Good sir, this is not resolved, because this is our community, but it is your community too. And you have a right to live in peace in your community, and we too should have a right to live in peace in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Just before Mr. Brown comes.
Mr. Moody?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't, I don't think Mrs. Jones's, uh, speech can fall on deaf ears. Uh, I would like, uh, I would like for council to be briefed on the, the crime stats in that area. I know recently, uh, we had indicated we were going to beef up enforcement there. Two, two different issues, the way I see it. One, one is the, the methadone construction of the methadone clinic. The other is the existing conditions under which citizens say they're living there, and no one should have to live under a padlock and key, uh, as a way of life, and no disrespect to the police officers, nobody should have to peer out of their window and see police cars sitting in the street. Uh, that's a double-edged sword. One, one, one hand says, "Well, I should feel safe." The other hand tells you, "There's something bad going on." So, nobody should have to endure those types of things. So, I think it would be good if council was briefed with, uh, the goings-on and, and the crime stats for that particular area, uh, so we can get a good handle on it before and, probably after the methadone clinic is constructed, i- if my colleagues are in agreement. I see most of the hits not.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for giving me a chance to talk to you all. I basically wanted to tell you how frightened I am of what is going on now with the downtown tunnel, the closures, et cetera, et cetera. I came to Portsmouth back in 1990, and I owned the McDonald Restaurant on London and Effingham. I later in 2000 bought the old Woolworth Building on High Street and built Roger Brown's Restaurant and Sports Bar. I've always looked at Portsmouth as being one hell of a town to have a business, but right now, people cannot get to us. We need to fix it. My restaurant is down 27% plus every weekend that tunnel is closed, and I feel for the most part that I'm willing to talk. I would like it if someone had surveyed me about how businesses are affected by the tunnel closures. I can tell you a story that would curl your hair. And I think also, this is my first time talking before you, next time, I think I'll bring a coat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Randall?
I've listened to all of the speakers, and I can feel your pain, because I know where you are coming from. I've worked down in the area, and I'm familiar with most of the parents and the children in that area. We do have some serious problems. We cannot hide our heads in the sand and act as if it does not exist. I've been around in your communities. I've worked around in your communities, and I feel your pain, because I've also been involved in having to clear up some of the situations in some of the other communities. When it's a problem that affects the citizens of Portsmouth, it's the city's problem, and I think we need to all take time and look and listen to the voices of the people who are having to live out there in the midst of these things and not have some means of seeking restitution. Otherwise, there is no need of saying, "I'm a citizen in the city of Portsmouth." We all guard creatures. We all feel the pain when our brothers and sisters are feeling the pain. And I think it's time that we put these things in some type of sequential order to try to bring some type of peace of mind to the individuals who are living with it. I know where you're coming from. I walked through your neighborhoods. I know the residents that are in the neighborhoods. I know the children that have come through the neighborhoods, and there are some changes that need to be made, but it's not just the problem for that particular community. It's the city's problem, and we have to face that reality and try to find some solutions rather than shifting it from one part of town to another part of town to try to get something done. I'm hoping that the city manager and staff can come up with some means of meeting with the residents and see if they have some tentative ideas as far as the solutions to their problems. You can sit in a little council and see what's going on on the other side if you never walk through the walls or walk through the streets and see what it is that they are dealing with. And I can identify with it because I've walked through those streets. I know some of the families that are out there, and I think sometimes we need to go beyond where we are sitting here and put yourself in their spots and see what's going on. And I just had to say it, because sometimes you get the feeling of indifference. It's not indifference. It means we need to take some kind of action. And so that is the charge that we need to put forth, and it's not grandstanding, it's facing a fact. We have some problems, and we need to deal with them. And I want you to know, I'm willing to make the joyful noise to deal with them, because we've had to do it to blaze trails, and I'm looking at you, Mr. Wright, 'cause you were out there with us when we blazed trails to get some things done. We walked the streets. We knocked on the doors, and if that's what it takes to straighten up, for people to have a decent place to live, I'm willing to walk the streets again and make a noise, and that's what we need to do. But thank you. I just had to get it off my mind. I don't like what I'm seeing.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our final speaker is Mr. Lamar Price.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
And honorable council members. That's the perfect segue. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Randall, because tonight I was just sitting back there listening to the speakers, and I was saying the same thing. It's, I can see, uh, that there is somewhat of a disconnect within the city. So, the last time I was before you, um, I brought up the issue in Churchland, uh, not having a rec center, and so that's not my topic I'm going to speak about tonight, but I just want to be real brief to say that, uh, still haven't not made any progress from what I know on that issue. I mean, I'm a resident of Churchland, by the way, lifelong resident of Portsmouth. I'm a veteran, served in the United States Army. Um, and our children in Churchland have nowhere to go, and now we have the same, uh, same issue in Truxton. And I'm here tonight to tell you that, uh, we're going to begin to unite together, the citizens of Portsmouth, the residents of Churchland, and the residents of Truxton. We're going to come together to get both issues resolved in both places. We're not going to allow this to become an issue where we're fighting against them to prolong them getting a center while we wait, and vice versa. So, with that being said, tonight I'm here, uh, on behalf of our homeless. Um, again, like I said, I'm a, I'm a citizen of Portsmouth, lifelong resident, and I live in the Churchland area, but tonight I come here to ask, what is the city's, city of Portsmouth's approach on how to fix the issue of the homeless in our city? Uh, last week, uh, I happened to attend the P-HAC meeting, Portsmouth Homeless Action Consortium, and I was astonished to sit back and listen to a lot of the things that were One of the things that was brought up at the roundtable discussion that shocked me was there's a 10-year plan that they're working on, and I can tell you, in 10 years, we're going to have a lot of casualties that's living right out here on these streets that we walk on every day. The heat, the winter coming up, they're not going to make it. A 10-year plan, I think that's absurd, because I think if we put ourselves in their shoes, we would want someone to take action immediately. Uh, and, and, and the other things that came up in that meeting that I'm concerned about, um, because there's one particular, my family and I, we do what we can. So, we're, we're active, but I don't do my alms before people. I don't go around bragging about what we do, but I will bring it up because it serves a point in this, in this forum. Uh, there's people that we go down there and try to assist the best we can. Uh, I'm married, I have five children, I have one on the way. I'm a disabled veteran, I ain't, we don't, we, we're living on a fixed income, but we do what we can to help those less fortunate. There was one particular lady that we've been trying to help get into public housing, and the issue that we ran into, because she doesn't work, and there's a $50 minimum a month for a person to get into somewhere like a public housing project, but the problem is, is all the red tape that's set up that's preventing these people from getting the help they need. See, we can walk past these people on the streets, and we just see a person sitting there with bags and have on dirty clothes, and it's easy to dismiss that and cast an opinion, but until you actually stopped and talked to these people and began to learn where they come from and the issues that they deal with, it, it astonishes me how we can walk, that people can just, and I stand there and I observe citizens, and they walk past these people with no compassion, and it makes me hurt, more for the people that can walk past them and not do anything. The scripture says, "To whom much is given, much is required." And I'm telling you, as public servants, it's not about carrying a title. At this point, we need results. We don't want to hear, I don't want to hear no more about 10-year plans and what the plan is, and, and, and we got this organization here trying to do something, and, and, and it doesn't work because this organ, they need this organization over here to do their part, and the whole time, all we got is just a bunch of people at a roundtable talking about what needs to be done instead of getting the job done. These people are out here on the streets, and you see them, and you know they're there, and the answer is not incarcerating them because of vagrancy, because that's just putting a Band-Aid on an amputation. The answer is, let's get these people the support and the assistance that they need. They're down, let's not kick them. You don't kick a person when they're down. So, I, I came here tonight to say there needs to be more accountability, and, and we need to come together and break through these barriers so that we can assist those who are less fortunate, because that's how we're going to be judged. Every city is judged, I believe, about how they treat the least among them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well done. Good night. Madam Clerk, is that it?
All right. Let me, uh, say before we adjourn, I do, and I don't often do, uh, birthday shout-outs, but today is Mr. Slim Overton, the mayor of Douglas Park's birthday, and the reason I know that, he's been reminding us for the last three weeks.
That's right.
So, we want to make sure that we give him a shout-out, a happy birthday, and
Right.
Want to let him also know today is Mean Joe Green's birthday, so, uh, I don't know if that means anything or not, but, uh, we're adjourned. Good night.
Okay. Where is he?